All right, so Caitlin, do you want to start with anything? Or did you, or are you just answering questions? I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to say before we kind of got into it.
So I do have a statement from the superintendent about the adjustment counselor's statement, or adjustment counselor position.
Okay.
So what I've brought to you are two budgets, the one that we have been working on, that we presented since November. And then one requested with a level service that does not include the adjustment counselor, which would be, which would allow us to create a program that I think the school committee has wanted and the school has been, has been working towards. So I can read a statement from the superintendent if that would be helpful now or later.
I'm just going to ask whichever photo that is.
That's a hundred dollar fine out of Shriming.
Uh, go ahead.
Sure. Excuse me, sir. So this is from Superintendent Jennifer Colkeen. It is my professional recommendation that the position of adjustment counselor remain in the current proposed budget. DESI, through their mental and behavioral health and wellness support, recommends that schools and districts build internal capacity to meet the social, emotional, and behavioral and mental health needs of their students, families, and staff. Studies have shown the value of developing comprehensive school mental health programs and helping students achieve academically and have access to experiences that build social skills, leadership, self-awareness, and caring connections to adults in their school and community. The adjustment counselor role provides a variety of services to students, including but not limited to walk-in informal counseling, tier one; students seen per month who are not formally on the school psychologist or counselor's caseloads, but utilize walk-in counseling services on an as-needed basis; general education counseling services, tier two; students, groups on the school psychologist or counselor's caseloads who are seen regularly, typically weekly, as part of a tier-two intervention; IEP 504 counseling services, tier three; students on the school psychologist or counselor's caseloads who are seen weekly or twice per week as part of their IEP or 504; behavioral crisis response; support of students in a highly escalated, dysregulated state; other social, emotional supports initiatives; supporting classroom teachers with tier-one SEL, read alouds, discussion, lessons, et cetera; leading classroom lessons and discussions around specific topics, identity, career choices; social problem-solving, conflict resolution; introducing a school-wide behavior system; weekly lunch groups, book club for upper grades, regular consultation meetings with teachers outside, service providers, and families. So this is a statement from Superintendent Jennifer Colkeen. Thank you.
Great. Do you have anything else to add about the budgets?
I have a question on that. That name was proposed, right?
That position was posted this year alongside a psychologist and a BCBA to see what was available mid-year. And we were able to hire a BCBA to fill the, the role that we lost last year. And then this upcoming year, we would like to have an adjustment counselor as well.
I'm just, so that means that a position has been advertised and hasn't been able to be filled over so far this year. Is that right or not?
That's correct. We've had three applicants, none of whom have been credentialed.
So, so, let me just talk for one second. So if you're gonna, if anybody's gonna talk from the audience, we just need you to come up to the microphone, uh, that people at home can hear.
Yeah.
You want me to step up and repeat what I said?
Yes. Otherwise, they can't hear at home.
There's also a mic there from Caitlin.
So we have posted advertisements for a counselor for our school three different times. We've had three applicants, none of whom have been credentialed, for hiring or even considering for an interview. The market out there is, is hard. And so we are trying to be as proactive as we can by posting for a position still to see if we can get somebody for next year. As schools begin to rearrange their situations, there's an opportunity there for us to try to take advantage of something like that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And that's all in this new budget, right?
Yes, the, the budget that's been presented in previous meetings.
You've got two different versions.
There is an alternate budget that does not include the adjustment counselor as requested by the school committee.
Would that answer your question mark?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So before us, as Caitlin mentioned, we have two different versions, the level serviced and the not level serviced.
The one with the new counselor.
Correct. The, right. And so, and if I missed somebody, you guys help me keep an eye on the audience in case somebody has a question. I'm looking down. Does anybody have any particular questions that they want to ask? I don't know how to do line by line.
Yeah, I had a, a whole bunch of different questions and a whole bunch of different lines, mostly lines where the proposed budget seemed to indicate, seemed to refer to previous budgets, but not referred to previous actual expenditures in the last couple of years. And that raised the general questions to why many of the items are budgeted at the, where they are. And I, I start with the mindset that we've had a difficult time this year with people in the community voting things down. Our two and a half went down, proposal went down twice, with people in the community believing that that meant, okay, taxes are only going to go up so much. They then got disabused of that assumption because their, the reevaluation on the power plant meant that if you live here in town, your taxes went up even more because as a resident, you have to carry more burden. So I'm, as I look any further, I'm also come across the excesses that are returned at the end of the year that are unspent line items. In other words, at, when the books are closed at the end of the year, I would assume we would be somewhat over our intended line, intended budget, but not my, I'm not budget, but the expected expenses. But in fact, it turns out that we've been returned, we've had a total of over a hundred thousand dollars not spent from the elementary school budget in almost every year. And that raises again the question, what does the budget represent? And the, which honestly is, it leaves me stunned, thinking that we could probably reduce a lot of budget items with an eye to actual expenses plus a little bit to make sure that there's something there, but we, you know, we could re, lower the budget significantly. Not lower program or spending, but actually just lower budget. And, I mean, I can go through line by line for a whole bunch of lines and come up with about thirty-five thousand dollars, which I don't, I wouldn't assume we would do, we would implement, but it really raises a question in my mind. And finally, there's also the question, as we budget ahead, somewhere in this year's expenses, we're going to have to find money towards exploring the roof repair or the roof assessment, not the actual work on the roof, but the assessment. And then in future years, we're going to have to find money to put into roof repair. And I don't see that in the proposed budget. I don't see that in our expenses coming. And we're not going to carry that whole project for sure. That's going to be a partial, that's going to be something probably mostly carried by the, the town as a capital expense, but it's certainly going to be something, they're going to want us to chip in for, and they said as much. So without going into the details, I don't know if you sent this document over?
Why don't you, well, I mean, why don't you go through the details?
Okay.
Let's, let's do it.
All right. I mean, I'll just.
Ask the question so that we have an answer.
I'll just start at the, start at the top and, and with not a, not a savings, but I'll start with the contracted services line number one. And it looks to me like our actual expenditures are going up and the requested budget is, is down from actual expenditures. And there's a note that there's something happening with a, it's in one of these documents. I don't, my screen's not wide enough when I enlarge everything. But you have noted that there's an explanation for why it's going up?
Yes, there's an increase in Medicaid contracted services fees.
So if we spend almost, you know, if we spent close to six thousand last year and it's going to go up, why are we budgeting only five? It didn't make a lot of sense to me, so I, now, as I say, that's one going up, an increase, not a decrease, but, or a savings, but, you know, I didn't, it didn't make sense to me. It looked to me like we should be considering that those expenses are going to go up and we're going to need to find, you know, a percentage over at least the, the six thousand that was last year. So that's number one.
Do, do, so let's, let Caitlin speak to that. Do you have, or David, speak to that.
So, let's back up. I presented the budget in November. In December, you went line by line and I made adjustments. And in January, there were more adjustments. And this is the budget that we need, we, we need a budget to bring to the public hearing on Monday. So I asked for any questions weeks ago so that I could give you a detailed explanation, line by line, and I received very few. So I can go over line by line on the spot right now, but I'm not sure it's a great use of our time.
Well, I went before the select board last, last week. Was that it? It was the week before where, with my budget and got asked some very, you know, very specific and somewhat tough questions and, you know, we're going to have to do that. I don't think they're going to be shy about looking through our budget and saying, defend this. And I want to have something I can defend. So if they sit there and they look at our budget and they say, why is it this way? I, I want to have something to say. I don't want to just sit there and put on my thumbs and say, I, I don't know what to say. I'd like to be able to defend what we have. Okay?
Yeah, I, I just wish those questions had been presented weeks ago when I asked for them so that I could have dug, because I, right now on the spot, I can't dig into every single line and what's expended and what's expected for next year and what's not expected.
I, I did ask about one specific line to you prior on the increase of the superintendent's salary, saying that it seemed to me to make a lot more, that, that's down line seven, that instead of giving a line that projecting forward a, a standard cost of living, it looked like to me, could you please, I think I stated, could you please kind of take the midpoint of the advertised salary for the three candidates that we have and just make a note that, you know, we have three candidates, they're going to negotiate a salary after they're chosen, week after the next?
Yeah, so that line is a Union 28 line that budget passed back in November. So any of those lines that would be changed would have to go back to the Joint Supervisory Committee and the budget would have to be amended.
Okay, but you, so that's the answer to my question from two weeks ago, or, or a month ago? And we couldn't just have had the, again, the range? Well, the, you know, I don't remember what that was. I mean, we could look it up, but, you know, what they, what it was advertised as, but...
Right, so what Caitlin's saying is that we could do that in our budget, but the Union 28 has, has approved a budget?
I understand that. I just haven't been part of that. I know they're going to negotiate with somebody and they're going to negotiate a range and it's not going to have any relevance to this, this number. I mean, they're just going to sit and do that. And I know who's going to do it. I just, so that's why I had asked that however many weeks ago. So what you're saying is you'd rather not go through the line by line because you didn't get it from before?
Well, we've been line by line for the past few meetings and if there were questions that weren't answered, I mean...
I hear you. I hear your point. And so we're, we're going to try and be as efficient as possible, but to Mark's point, it is true that we get asked questions when we go and present our budget. So sometimes we all kind of need to hear the answers. And when emails are sent directly to you, you send the email directly back to the person asking, so the rest of the board doesn't always hear the answers. So we're going to try and be as efficient as possible, but some things we all need to hear at the same time so that we all have those, those answers.
I think particularly the, the issue is going to be, given today's climate, why are we always underspent by over a hundred thousand dollars?
So I can answer that. The past few years, we've been able to use ESAR money for contracted services, for supplies and materials, for professional development. That money is not available to us next year. We also cut off spending last year in the spring, and so some of the underspent lines were due to saved money in those lines because we had the added district expenses.
And you think that explains three hundred thousand dollars in physical, let's see, no, a hundred and thirty-five thousand in physical thirty, twenty-three, a hundred and forty-four thousand in twenty-two, let's see, two hundred thousand. And this is just the elementary budget, not the elementary and secondary. Secondary is not quite as large, but, and this is also in twenty-one and also in, well, the year of the pandemic, things were much, much less. But what, back before that, nineteen, was back to three hundred thousand dollars. So you think that would...
I wasn't here then, Mark. I don't know.
No, I wasn't here either, so I'm not sure. I have to, I, I just, you know, I, we're going to get asked that question by people sometimes on the street, or they're going to ask me this at that meeting, you know, defend your budget. And I don't know how to defend it. I just don't, I mean, I want to, want to say, I will say publicly then and now that I don't see any reason to reduce any program-related monies. If there's monies in here for books, for materials and the rest, I don't have any interest in reducing or seeing any questions there. You know, a school is a school. You've got to teach, you've got to work, you've got to use things. Also, salaries are contracted and I don't see, you know, I don't see anything to be concerned there. However, there's a whole host of other things that go up and go down or, or just, a lot of times what, just the, where budget lines seem to be based on previous year's budget and not on previous year's expenses. And, you know, not trying to say anything about the principal's technology, because I don't know what technology you use. However, we had a budget line for three years in a row that was a thousand dollars and expenses in those lines were always zero. So I can see that maybe, you know, we could say, okay, we're going to be adding to the principal's technology with, I'm not sure what, but certain things, and it would come up in, in the line, but why would the line be the same as the last three years?
And those are the types of questions that we get asked. So it would be good for us to have, you know, a comprehensive answer to that.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I, I understand what Mark's saying, but it's, it's also nice, we give money back to the town, but we always have a cushion. I like to have that cushion because what happens if more kids come into town? What happens if this happens? What happens if that happens? And then we got to go to the select board and we got to go to the finance committee and we got to ask for more money. I mean, I'd rather give money back. I know we're allowed through the committee to shuffle things around. Am I saying that? If, if we have to? Am I right in that? Okay. And so it's, 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 I'm sure the select board's happy we give back money. And we've always worked well with them and the finance committee and say, this, this is our situation, this is what we need. And they've never said no to me in the ten years I've been here. So I'm happy with this budget. I went through it.
Well, okay.
I just say in response that when I said totaled up thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, I don't know where I got the seven. But anyway, you know, thirty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars, I was just assuming that that didn't empty any line, that I wasn't zeroing out lines, that I wasn't dropping things down to less than what was spent in this year. So there's definitely still be a cushion available. However, you know, going back in years and the thousands of dollars that are unspent, they're not money we're giving back. I mean, this is the question where we set a budget, all the departments set budgets, that gets worked into what the taxes are supposed to be, and then we find out at the end that, oh, we didn't need to have our taxes that high. I mean, I, I just, and, I don't know, this is my first time on the school committee, maybe I, you know, I'm not sure what else to say. I mean, unless, unless we, you know, I can just say, here it is, and...
I think, I think there's some good points there. I definitely do think that, you know, when we go to defend this budget, we want to do just that. We want to be able to defend it in a, in a way that makes it sound like we've been thoughtful and respectful of the taxpayers' money and the needs of the school. So that's a balancing act there. I would like us to focus on the, the level services budget. I hear what was presented from Caitlin about the adjustment counselor? Is that the title? Adjustment counselor. I know they can be called lots of different things, so I just want to make sure I'm calling it the right thing. And that's, you know, it's a reasonable request, I think, to put in the budget. I asked for level service, knowing that that was not part, technically part of the level service budget, but I, I don't have a problem with including that in a level service budget. I do, there are, there are though, there is one line, though, that I think we do need to look at. I know, you know, Caitlin may have other questions or somebody else may have other, but mine is line twenty-eight, the principal's salary. It's budgeted here for ninety-eight thousand fifteen. Currently, the budget, the contract with the principal is ninety-five thousand. So a three percent increase would be ninety-seven eight fifty, not a hundred and one. So my suggestion would be that we re-budget that for ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty. I don't know why it's still showing ninety-eight thousand fifteen, because that's not what he's, that's not what the principal's currently being paid. So I think we need to just clean that up.
So you're talking about just the twenty-twenty-four budget, not the twenty-twenty-five requested budget?
Well, both. I'm talking about both. So twenty-twenty-four shows ninety-eight fifteen. That's not currently what that line is. It's ninety-five. And then when you add three percent, which is what, you know, it looks like they were looking to get, that's what the difference is in the, in the last column, is a three percent increase, comes to ninety-seven eight fifty, not a hundred and one. A hundred and one would be a six-point-four-ish increase.
You can, I mean, the school committee too can budget whatever you'd like for that line, but the contract between the superintendent and the principal might be different than what you budget for.
But again, but we are the, the, for lack of a better word, controllers of the budget, and so that really should have been a conversation. We approve all budgets, teachers, paras. And again, that is not an, that, that's an incorrect number there. Ninety-eight fifteen isn't what they're currently being paid.
If, if you can come to the mic, David, please. Thank you. Thank you.
So if my understanding is correct, and what you were doing in this meeting is proposing that you cut my next year's salary that was negotiated with the superintendent, is that correct?
Well, I think what I'm trying to do is, is correct the numbers in the budget, and the budget right now is not correct. So that's what I'm trying to do.
So you are saying that the negotiated contract that I had with the superintendent, you're going to make an effort to negate that?
If that's how it comes out, what I'm trying to do is correct the budget so that it reflects what it should be.
So do you think, do you think that that should have been something that was brought up for me before this meeting?
Yes, it should have.
Yes.
Then, then why wasn't it?
Because I can't access you before this.
What? I am here every single day.
I have tried and I have been, I have been told by the superintendent that I am to go through her to get to you.
Right. That is standard procedure with school committees and superintendents and principals.
So I could not have that conversation with you because I could not get...
I find that really hard to believe. I really, and I'm trying to assume good intent, but I'm finding this to be really disrespectful of me.
And I'm not trying for, to be disrespectful?
Well, I'm sorry. This is the way it ended up. You were hugely disrespectful to me the first meeting that we had. Do you remember that?
Okay.
Do you remember that?
What I'm trying to do right now is...
That's Dr. Crane.
Excuse me. Dr. Crane. I'm trying to fix the budget so that it, that it reflects what is actually happening. What is actually happening is a budget is ninety-five thousand this year, and a three percent increase on top of that would be ninety-seven eight fifty.
So you were, you were attempting to undermine a negotiated contract that I have with the superintendent?
I had no part of that negotiations nor prior knowledge of those negotiations.
And rightly so. She has the right to negotiate a contract with the superintendent.
And I have the right to work with the rest of the board to set the budget.
That's fine.
That's all I'm trying to do.
That's fine, and I will let you do that, but without me here, I am, I am beyond upset about this. This is really springing something that's unfair on me. At an opportune moment...
I was in no way trying to spring this on you, nor was I trying to be disrespectful.
She did not give us the contract.
No, I find this unforgivable.
You're not at the microphone anymore, so the people at home can't hear you.
Good night. I am sorry.
Okay.
I am really sorry.
Can I clarify? The FY twenty-four budget amount is ninety-eight thousand fifteen dollars. It doesn't matter what his contract is this year in our budget, it is ninety-eight thousand fifteen dollars. It has to remain that way because that was the budget that was approved by the school committee and by the town. You can opt to change the budgeted amount of the principal's salary, but it does not affect the contract that he has with the superintendent. That is the superintendent's discretion.
Okay.
So we can change that budgeted amount, but it will just run over that budget.
Well, I just think that she needs to get, you know, put the actual numbers that are supposed to be in here, in here.
Those are the actual numbers.
So he was getting, this year, his salary was...
Ninety-five.
Yes, that is his actual amount, which is different than the budgeted amount. The budgeted amount, which was approved by the school committee and the town...
For this year was ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight thousand fifteen dollars.
But his salary was actually negotiated at ninety-five.
So next year, when I do a budget that has the FY twenty-four actual amount, that's where you'll see the ninety-five thousand.
Again, I guess this gets down to the question that budgets seem to be drawn up on budgets and not expenditures, and it's just confusing.
Well, we can't do an FY twenty-four actual amount because we're currently in FY twenty-four.
I hear you. And really, that's, that's like the minor point. I mean, so that's fine. Next... Next, we'll have an actual column next to it that shows 95. That's fine. The dollar amounts, though, is what I'm talking about. And the dollar amounts are $95,000. And a 3% raise on that is $97,850. So if that's what, what was the intent, which is, appears to be, because that's what the percentage is in the column, then the dollar amount is $97,850, not $101. Um, so again, when we're talking about making this budget reflect what is actually happening, I would like the 2025 budget to reflect that. That's the money that's actually gonna be expended.
But what's actually, when you, what was actually budgeted for FY '24 is $98,015. What's actually going to be expended for FY '25 is $101,000.
So that is something that I am in consultation with the attorney about. And so what I will say right now is that a 3% budget, a 3% increase would be $97,850.
That, if you were to take the actual amount and add 3% to it, that might be that value, but that's not what we need to budget because it's not the contract we have going into next year.
I hear you.
So then the percentage needs to be placed, that's all.
So he's not getting a 3% raise? He's getting?
6.4.
6.4.
That would be if he got $101,000.
Correct.
Which, you know, if she has every right to hire and so forth, I do need to point out that the hiring was presented at the last meeting. However, the contract was not, the terms of the contract, she did not say that she had for us at that time. So, um, I just want that to go on the record that that was a major, I thought disrespect, since that word's getting thrown around.
Yep.
And a number of people approached me within days saying that was a huge disrespect. To which I responded, superintendent, according to state law, has all the right to hire the principal in the terms that they want. I know she had put out a procedure for doing that, that she didn't follow, but she has the right to make that decision with or without explanation.
Did you wanna say something, Scott?
So I just wanted to clarify something. I, I hear you.
Just come a little bit closer.
Sorry. I hear you saying about the 3%, but the 3% is not, none of us were in those contract negotiations. Whether I agree or disagree with the dollar amounts, that's irrelevant. But imposing the 3% on the current salary negates whatever discussions happened in those contract negotiations. The dollar amount is the dollar amount. And the school committee absolutely has purview to change the dollar amount. And Caitlin's absolutely right to say, then you all will look at internally in your budget and say, how will we backfill? Where will we get it from? Some other line item. So, and they both work simultaneously.
Mm-hmm.
And if I may, one other point. I wanna go back to one of Mark's opening statements. Quote-unquote, "The town is asking for funds." I wanna be very clear about what was asked, because I was at that meeting about the capital improvement to the roof. The ask was, within your current FY '24, do you have any, or do you anticipate having any funds available to either pay for or assist with paying for, uh, potential engineering services to do a scope of work for the roof? There was no discussion about saying that there is going to be future asks that the entire roof project gets embedded into a school or, or even a portion of that. That conversation never happened. I'm not sure where you got that information. Uh, that is a very large, you're probably talking well over a million-dollar project when you're talking about roof, HVAC, all of the issues rolled into one. That's a huge capital improvement plan. That'll go through an entire capital improvement process. And you could be talking two to three years before you see that all come to fruition. So just wanna be very clear that it was never, in that meeting or any other meeting, said that you should start embedding costs for capital improvements in your current budget or any future budgets. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I just, I have a quick question. So, I understand that the superintendent can hire the principals, but she never reached out to you or the chair?
No.
And did you reach out to her?
I didn't know it was happening until last meeting. She announced to us at that moment is when the first time I heard it.
The previous month's?
Nice. That's really nice.
Yep.
Included a scenario of advertisements and meetings and so forth.
Timeline.
That would result in hiring a principal. That was in the previous month's packet.
Yep.
And then this happened beforehand. It happened at the next meeting, excuse me, not before, afterwards.
So I did not have any opportunities to have any discussions.
Okay.
Caitlin, do you have any questions? I just, I do.
Um, just clarifying questions, Caitlin, on some of the answers. And so I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, I know that we are budgeting that amount that was given for the Adjustment Counselor. Is that like in the highest range? Do you think that? I'm just like trying to gauge, because I know, um, CAGs and like PhD are attached to that. So assuming that's kind of like the highest we'd get to, could be a little lower, could be right around there. Is that the?
We're a little in the middle. So we're budgeting for a CAGs/PhD, um, column, but a lower step.
Okay.
So I think the, the amount is $78,046. It could be more than. We get a terrific, you know, Adjustment Counselor that we think is gonna do wonders for the school and, you know, we can, um, we can hire more. That would be great if it ends up being someone brand new with a, with a master's and, you know, you know, we can change based on the contract.
Um, just wanna make sure I understood that right. And then, sorry if this has been talked about before I got here. Um, and I was trying to follow some of the conversation between, is an Adjustment Counselor in this level service draft included? No.
No.
So.
It's included in this one.
But in this included is a second preschool.
Both have two preschool classes.
Okay. And so just so the committee knows, I did ask, what is the current cost of having a second preschool? Just in general, with a teacher and a para? Um, and it's about, give or take $97,000. 97.5. Can go either way a little bit. Um, so just to keep that in mind on our March meeting, um, the intent is to get more information on how many preschoolers have registered, um, what numbers look like, to get, um, like census numbers that I know Gillian tracks and I think the central office tracks as well. Um, so just to keep in mind that we may or may not need that second preschool. And if we didn't for the numbers that are being shown or whatever decision we came up to, that is around 97.5. So I thought that was, um, helpful information.
Can I put a, a denim on that? Can we get that decision made as early as possible?
So registration ends early, mid-March. So we should have those numbers by our March meeting? How many kids were registered?
And there are six three-year-olds in, that will be four next year. And so the four-year-olds, there's 12, I believe. I don't have the numbers in front.
Yeah.
So, um, just to give kind of a perspective is that last year's class was on the, you know, larger side to begin with. And then we had a couple that added on that added, um, the more where we split them.
Sorry. We should also consider what the census information tells us, what the possible?
Right. That's what I just said.
Yep.
Yes, we have that.
That's, they do look at that data too.
Yep.
So just, I'll table that to March, but just to have it in the fourth thought.
Yeah. Good.
I'm trying to think if there was anything else. Um, and I did ask about two third-grade classrooms next year, seeing that the data had showed that last year, which is why they had two first grade, or second grades this year. Um, and they, both Caitlin and the principal said that they don't have any plans to reduce staff members at this time. So a decision on whether there will be two classrooms for that grade has not necessarily been, um, determined, but they don't plan to reduce staff. Just sharing feedback with the members. And then I asked if there are any large curriculum or textbooks purchases planned for 2024, 25. And, um, both said that no large purchases out of the local budget are be, are planned for next year. And I think we have like $10,000 in there.
Right. So, so if.
Where would that be? What line would that be in if that was the two?
It is.
It's in the 50s, I think.
Yeah, it is. I'm just, um.
I think it's in the 50s.
49.
49.
Textbooks and instructional materials, right?
Yep.
And so that was, um,
What town?
At $10,000.
So in the level funded budget, that was reduced. But there's no major ones expended. So we would expect, I don't think I considered that. Reducing that, but it would, um.
Very little has been taken out of that budget up to date.
And I think they've been using ESER. I always wanna call it ESR. ESER funds.
And you're not gonna be able to do that next year.
No. ESER money runs out November 30th, so all will be expended from ESER.
So you're, this year's still currently using ESER money? You're saying that's why so little has been taken out? Is that the answer? Okay. But you anticipate next year because no ESER money, more will be taken out. But, um, do you have a, do you have any idea right now how much is being used from the ESER account?
Um, I could look into that and come back to complete ESER.
And that could be used up through November of next year?
Sorry, September 30th.
Oh, okay. So we could, we could make a purchase in late August, September for that. Is that, again, I guess my second question would be, is there in the, is there money left to do that? So how much has been taken out? And then is there money left? You know, how much money is left that would, um, finish off that line? So theoretically, we could make a purchase in September and finish off that line, right?
Yes. Whatever money we have left in ESER, uh, we'll take purchases made over the summer and make sure that all the money is expended out of ESER.
Because we had?
We have money left over.
Right. Because we had that salary in there that's not being used, right?
For this fiscal year?
The Adjustment Counselor.
Yes. So for this fiscal year, we probably have some money, um, because of the, because it took so long to hire, um, the position through ESER. But we'll make sure all that is expended. Um, but that doesn't have any effect on next fiscal year budget.
No, but, but that line?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think you're answering it. But is the BCBA that was just hired being used, um, salary coming out of that ESER account?
Right now, because I believe the, for ESER, for that amount was written for a psychologist or for an Adjustment Counselor. We'll look into whether the BCBA qualifies for what we wrote the grant for. And so we may switch the psychologist over to ESER, put the BCBA on the, the, well, whatever.
Okay. But either way, we're talking about, you know, whatever, six months that no position, there was no filled position there. So that much of salary could be put in further into textbooks and whatever we need it for. And further purchases could be made this fiscal year. Am I right?
Is, are we talking about reducing this line? I'm not sure.
Nope, nope. I'm just asking about ESER money now. I'm taking a quick diversion.
I would need to probably look into your questions further, um, as I go through our ESER amounts. Not prepared for that.
Okay. Could you, will you have enough time between now and Monday, Monday's meeting to, to come up with a, um, an updated ESER account?
One.
You didn't say no. I'm asking.
I'm not sure. Tomorrow we have a superintendent's site visit. If you can email me with your specific question, I can see if I have time on Monday to.
I think just an updated, um, where are we at in the ESER account? How much is left? Similar to what you give us for our regular budget.
But it also takes kind of working with our director of curriculum instruction to see what, because some of that money they've already had a plan for.
Yep.
Um, the principal might already have a plans for some of it.
Yeah.
So looking at what we have expended right now is not the same as looking at what we already have plans for.
Sure.
So it looks like probably not, but you might try.
Probably not. I'm trying.
That's fine. That's fine. You can give that as an answer. That's fine. Okay.
I mean, I think it would be helpful in March, too.
Yeah. I definitely think so. Okay. That's fine. All right. So, um, any other questions, line item questions about this?
So just asking in a different way. Very similar, level services without Adjustment Counselor. This is with, and that's the biggest difference between the two.
The only difference.
That's the only difference.
That's the only difference? You, you level funded the rest of this, the regular draft budget?
Level service.
I'm sorry, level service. I do mean that, level service, not level funded. I apologize.
I'll make a motion. We go with the draft, 2025 budget. Present that on Monday. On the select board.
Wait, which one?
Just the draft?
Yeah.
The one with the Adjustment Counselor.
Which, um, so I'll second it for the purpose of discussions, which would, Caitlin, just make sure I wanna, I'm reading this correctly. Which would be an increase of 1.9%? And that 1.9% is wholly the Adjustment Counselor?
Includes Adjustment Counselor.
I know. That, that raises our budget 1.9% because the other budget would be, it was zero, wasn't it?
Correct.
The other very question, depends if we're talking about the town appropriations versus the total use of funding?
I'm sorry. Say that again. I didn't hear you.
It depends on if you're, some of those percentages are slightly different. Like for the total use of funding is 1.89%, but the amount remaining from appropriation is 2.1%. So it depends on which summary line you're talking about.
I'm, so I'm looking at the gross elementary, gross total elementary, right? Yours, all the way over the difference is 1.9% on the draft budget and 0% on the level funded budget.
Yes. If you go to the summary page, it has, it goes down to another document.
Oh, the very first. So see how it's.
Okay.
So basically, it's 2.1?
So the amount remaining for the town appropriation amount is a 2.1% increase.
Okay. So in the, I guess it's the same question. It's now a 2% difference between the level funded and the draft. 2% encompasses only the Adjustment Counselor's salary?
No, there's a bunch of line items.
Service, it is, it represents 2%. That's the only change between the two drafts. I'm gonna ask it one more time. Sorry. The difference between these two is a 2%, right? So the draft budget is 2.1% and the regular, the level, level service is a 0.1%. So that's a difference of 2%. And the 2% is the cost of the Adjustment Counselor's salary?
Yes.
And some small line items, too, I think.
No, I think she said it all the same. Anything else?
They're the same difference. If one of has notes, the other one doesn't, that's also a difference.
That's basically the salary, the $81,000 for the counselor.
Yeah. That just, um.
Which is the high end.
78, 46.
All right. Okay.
And we're just voting to which one we're taking to present?
Yep.
It's not really voting on the budget?
No, because we'll still have our budget hearing, and if there's any... Oh, hopefully it's the same, but, you know, it's a draft. So there was a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Not at this time. And March will have more information on stuff.
Yeah, and that's where things might change. Mark, you good? I just want to make sure I'm not missing you down there.
I don't have anything more to say. I think I've said everything.
Okay. All right. So there's a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget labeled dra, labeled draft, for clarity's sake, versus the level service draft. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Opposed.
Nope.
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're opposed. I oppose. All right. So three to one.
Is that it?
No. Uh, the secondary budget. The secondary budget is a secondary budget. There's not really nothing more we can do with it. But we have to accept it. I did not hand it to you.
Do you have it?
I have it somewhere. Can you read off the number, Caitlin? It's, again, it's not much we can do about it, so...
So the requested budget for Irving Secondary is $1,409,47.
I'll make a motion to approve the secondary budget. All seconded. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Our next meeting is on Monday, February 12th, 5:30 PM, so that's a different time, and it's also a different location. It's in the Irving Senior Community Center. After that, there will be a joint Irving School Committee Select Board and FinCom meeting, Finance Committee meeting, at 7:00 PM, where we, where we will be presenting this budget to them. Then our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, March 19th, at, oh, sorry, no, the Policy Committee will be Tuesday, March 19th, at 6:30 PM, and our meeting will follow at 7:00.
That's in the back room of the senior center, our meeting.
Our, to be honest with you, I'm not sure which room they're going to give us at this point, Monday you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm assuming it's that room all the way in the back.
I would assume that, too, but that's not for me. I don't make that decision. And then the joint meeting will be in the, in the...
Big room.
Big room, yeah, like the cafeteria room.
I'll come find you, Mark.
Yeah.
I'll wear my yellow jacket so you can see me.
All right. Nothing else? All right. We'll make a motion to adjourn. All seconded. 5:59.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.